Will this server warrant for?
Decorated.
Good luck, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Welcome back, everybody. Today is the 27th. We're in the mid-morning agenda. Our next item is Roden Bridge with Jeff McFadden, and Jeff has a whole bunch of action items. So, number one, you want to do first?
Let's do the bids first. He's gonna go right down the list. Got two of them. There's probably a caveat in there also on those just like the pickups that...
Don't know when you get it?
Doesn't sound like we're gonna get it.
I want to buy a new car. I thought, huh, I wonder what the chances are of that.
That went off a lot.
Holy smoly.
I haven't looked at them. I don't know what you're even looking at from both ways.
Hey, the first bid is from Peterbilt, Boise Peterbilt. Um, this is a 548 Peterbilt truck. Snow dump, truck chassis, 350 horse, all kinds of extra with it. So, the total bid is for $199,380. 199380.
That was Peterson.
Just to give you an idea, that's 34, that's $41,000 more than the one we just got this year.
And I didn't look, Jeff, to see if it's available or not. I will, though. Somebody's opened this one and taped it.
That's the way it came.
That's the way it came?
Yep. They probably forgot to put something in it, so they opened it back up. I don't know. It came UPS or FedEx or something.
Okay, this is from Rush Truck Centers.
Rush?
R U S H in Jerome, Idaho. This is for an International HV607 truck. Looks like it's got pretty much everything the same as the other truck. And this bid is for $191,177. 191177.
Jeff, this is replacing existing or ones that have, are no longer new, correct? I mean, we do need to buy two dump trucks.
This will replace one of our 1980s models, dump trucks.
And this is for one or two?
One.
Just for one?
Last year, it was 158, I think, what we paid for the one last year.
And if we order it, even if the delivery is not guaranteed, we're still guaranteed that price?
But we might, I might have to re-budget for it because they're not, they won't bill it until they get it. That might be 2023.
Jeff, you have mostly Peterbilt now, don't you? Do you have any Internationals?
I got a big, oh, yeah, I've got four, four Internationals, I think.
Oh, do you? Okay.
Yeah.
I'm looking on the Peterbilt. I did not find on the Rush is that it's a delivery date or anything.
Do you have any preferences, or is there anything that outweighs one or the other?
Just seems like Internationals get to be 10 years old and they start getting electrical gremlins in them. Every one of them we've got.
It does say on the Peterbilt that it allow 40 to 42 weeks for equipment to reach Boise, allow approximately 90 to 120 days for installation finish, paint testing, and delivery will be contingent on Valley County award date and truck chassis delivery date.
I suppose I haven't talked to the guys at International, but Peter Kenworth didn't even put a bid in because they don't have any, they don't have any trucks available whatsoever this year. No slots to build or anything. The Peterbilt guy told me when we went to pick up the new one this year that, um, uh, it's been up too long, my brain just died. Oh, some of the big trucking companies, one down in Boise wanted to order 84 or 88 trucks this year. They got 22.
Well, I think we better get one on order.
Yep.
So, I just heard you say that International has electrical issues up in there. Is there anything else?
We, we don't know if that's still with the new ones or not.
Okay.
Jeff, do you know what the warranties are in these?
Uh, they're usually three years, 36,000 miles.
Let's see if I can find it.
One year, 36,000, something like that. I know 36,000 in there. I can't remember the years.
I think all cars are three years or 36,000, I think.
Trucks with this new Peterbilt we just got, is that?
Mechanics, they don't have a, yeah, I mean, it's $8,000, so it's $8,000. I mean, that's, if you don't have a...
They definitely have preferences.
You want to share them?
I mean, this, this new Peterbilt we got, we don't know, we've never bought a Peterbilt Bob Dale before. Nice truck, but still running deaf and still got all that emissions junk on it, so we're fighting that on the two Kenworths we got three years ago. We just, actually, our mobile mechanic just showed up today from Boise and he's gonna go through all of our F and catalytic converter trucks and manually regen every one of them because check engine lights are on on every one of them.
Remain that way. Make it away from that.
We just don't, we don't run long enough, hard enough, to get the parameters to make it regen. It'll start regen and then we let off the throttle to make a corner, or we stop them back up.
This was in your budget?
Luckily, I budgeted $200,000. And that, that'll include the, that includes the plow and everything with it. We just gotta build the harness for it.
I don't see anything on a warranty anywhere. Wrong week. Warranty items may require that the vehicle be transported to utility truck equipment in Boise for repair. Transportation costs of the vehicle are not covered by the warranty.
It's just a cab chassis truck, and it goes to utility and gets the bed and all the hydraulics and everything put on it.
So, there's gonna be more cost?
No, that's all added.
That's all added on there? Okay.
One lump sum.
And that's the Peterbilt?
Yep. Yes, that's the Peterbilt.
Take it back to Gooding for wherever, Jerome, or wherever it's coming from.
We've had some issues with Rush Trucking, dealing with the new motor for Sam's truck last winter. Still not resolved.
Why would we want to give them more business? Well, you gotta tell us because we have to make a good decision, Jeff.
Um, if, if, if it comes down to repairs and warranty work, I'd rather not deal with them. We actually had Brian Oakley write a letter that we sent to Lewiston because it was just rounding around with him on that new motor. Put it in, the front seal leaked. Took it off. We put the new seal in. And they wouldn't cover any of it because we put the seal in and we weren't about ready to ship it back to Lewiston. And trying to get parts from them is just tough.
I think we should go with the Peterbilt.
What I hear is we're leaning towards the Peterbilt.
That's up to you. I mean, it's an RFP, so if we don't take the lowest bidder, we'll just have to have a reason why.
Well, we have issues with our customer service.
Nothing on the International for warranty yet. What you're seeing is not much worth anything anyway. So, I'm gonna make the motion that we purchase the, um, not the International, what I'm thinking, the Peterbilt truck because it has a better service reputation, even though the prices are.
Second that.
That work for you, Jeff?
Yep.
Just moved in second, and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
Is there anything on there for you to sign out?
Yeah, there's a bid thing in here.
Good acceptance.
Jeff, while he's doing that, is there a way that you can send us these, the blue line maps?
I'm...
Or does it have to be on that?
I'm working on it. They, they offered me to do it electronically this year or paper. Kara's, I think she's at this time going through training on how to modify these maps online. I'm a paper person, sorry.
What?
They, they send us a CD every year for a copy, but we can't put anything in our computer down there.
So, I have to not accept the other one too, correct?
Yep. Should be a non-acceptance signature on that one.
Okay, let's move on down. You want to do the annual road and street?
We can do the blue line maps last. We finished, me and Doug, got the annual financial report completed. Just need your signature on it.
Everybody have the chance to look at that this weekend?
Good. And Jeff, the question I have for you, this did not go in front of the road advisory. I would do that. But the projects that you have called out for your 4.3 million or whatever it was, are all of those on your top priority list that we just approved?
Yep.
They are. I noticed that the crushing is back at 700. Did we get any crushing done this last year, or that was what we put in your budget for next year?
Me and Doug finally narrowed it down. I added the crushing into contract work.
Okay.
It was all part of that. Three, 3 million or 2.8 million or something like that.
Okay.
Yeah.
That was approved as part of your budget?
Yes.
And the East Roseberry, I don't remember that being on your list, but it shows 22, 23. So, is that slated for next summer? And what work are you gonna do there for that million?
It's, that'll be a two-year deal. We gotta go through and replace all those culverts, and we gotta replace that four culvert passage for Willow Creek right there at Roseberry. It's, it's gonna need a lot of work before it gets any new facelift.
I thought I was questioning the million dollars because we just spent a million dollars on Old State, so, I mean, is that really a high enough price tag for what you're hoping to accomplish?
Old State was 5, 550.
I thought it was a million.
Nope, that was 550.
Okay.
I thought it was 800,000, so.
Good clarity there.
No.
And then Patty Flat Road. I don't remember what we did on Patty Flat. Was that a full rebuild on that section from 55?
That's gonna be all culvert replacements. And to widen these roads, we're gonna have to buy right away.
And that's from 55 to farm-to-market?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And that's all included in this 4.3?
Yep. Those price, those costs in there are my best guesstimate.
But just for the record, then, if I'm recapping this, and I would like you to send this to Paul to get it on the agenda to be looked at, so that everybody knows, it looks like to actually run your department with, with the highway user funds, we really don't get enough to fully fund the department. And so, that's, we're at 3.2. The secure schools is on there for this year, and then the bridge, but we only get 3.2 in road user fees. It takes us about 4 million to run that department, is that right?
Roughly.
So, that's 800, approximately 800,000 we put in there this year from taxes actually just allows us to run the department.
Pretty much what we've been doing.
So, that just kind of reiterates for me, anyway, that, that, that we needed that.
That's how it was explained to the road advisory when Doug went to the whiteboard over there and he subtracted, and, you know, within four or five years, if we don't figure out something.
Jeff, wasn't it too many years, not too many years back, the highway user was about 2.2 million, wasn't it?
Yeah.
So, we gained about a million in that. Did they, they apparently changed the formula?
I think there's more people driving.
Okay, it's a gas tax, okay. So, people...
I don't know if they...
I thought there was a change to the formula.
I know they were talking about it, but I don't know if it happened last, no, I doubt it happens. This is 2021.
Oh, this is looking backward.
I think it just happened...
2020.
20, wasn't it?
Huh?
They changed how much the counties get versus the state. They gave it...
There was additional money commissioners that we restarted to receive. It's called new money. Um, that was approximately three years ago, and we started receiving an additional, additional funding.
That's down at the very last box on that financial report. It's called HB312. I think this year, we got 600 and some thousand dollars.
So, where do we account for, um, the property taxes that we just put in there?
So, we, this is the, we will next year.
Okay, so this is looking backward.
Correct.
Yeah.
So, I need a motion to approve this annual street?
Commissioner, sorry to interrupt you. That would be accounted for on line two or the, um, annual street financial report for fiscal year 2022. We will capture that in line number two.
What's line two, property taxes?
Property taxes, lovey.
We would move that, no.
Yeah.
Move to approve the fiscal year 2021 annual road and street financial report.
Second that.
Move in second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
And Jeff, will you forward that to Paul, please, and have it put on the agenda?
Is there anything I have to sign on this one, Jeff?
Yes.
I don't see a signature anywhere on this one.
Yeah. Could be the last page, or maybe Doug just signs it.
It's at the top here.
It's gotta be approved by the commission or a mayor.
Oh, it's at the very top. Commissioner, so you can print this out. So, then, let's, you want to go back now and do blue lines, or what do you want to do next?
Oh, let's just keep going down. We'll save blue lines till last. We've got a couple here. These speed feedback signs. Um, ITD has made a pretty generous donation for these signs. HOA came up with a thousand dollars. ITD's coming up with about six to install speed signs on the highway right of way through Smiths Ferry. These are the flashy ones. Reading through the agreement, I think, did you guys get that?
Mm-hmm.
So, basically, once they're installed, I'm not even sure who's responsible for installing them yet. I haven't read it yet or haven't seen it in there.
I was gonna say this right there.
It's all us.
It's all us. So, any damage to those signs from here on out, or if we do this, it comes to us. And they're about 35, must be about 3,500 dollars apiece. They're just like the ones we got on Warren Wagon that'll have the radar in them and shows you how fast you're actually going. They've, they've been proven to be a traffic calming device.
Says here, Jeff, if, if a device stopped working or was damaged somehow, it would be up to the county to repair it if they desired. Otherwise, the device would just not function, but the regular speed limit sign would still be in place as it is today.
They're, they're pretty tough.
And the installation is also the responsibility of the county. This will apply for a permit, they will apply for a permit from ITD to do the installation.
We will apply for it?
Yep. This is outlined in the agreement, and I don't have that.
From what I am, I'm understanding, talking to Doug about this, is the state has to do a, help me out here, Doug, they, they can't, they can't give their funds to the HOA. It has to go to a government entity.
Funding would come through the expenditures, and the funding would come through Valley County.
Yeah, so that's, that's why we're involved.
Mm-hmm. And then the ongoing maintenance would be the responsibility based on the cooperative agreement of Valley Counties.
I, I do know they're tough because the first winter, we had our big one on Warren Wagon. I think the first or second time we plowed, the snow, the snow hit it, broke the post off, and it laid underneath eight feet of snow till May, when we finally got it out and let it charge up and stood it back up, and it kept working.
Kept working, huh?
Did you ask the guys not to hit it again?
Yeah, we take them down in the fall now.
So, this would be like where the 45 mile an hour speed signs are as they come into the community?
You want to tell them where they're gonna go? I'm, I'm not quite sure.
I think that, that, that would have been the plan. Um, I, I don't know how many of you drive through Smiths Ferry, but we've grown just like anybody else, and we get several hundred rafters every weekend, and they're turning on Smiths Ferry Road. And, um, the other thing that you guys, I'm sure, are unaware of is that we have a multi-mailbox by the lodge that covers people that live within about 70 square miles, to be honest. The owner of the lodge no longer wants it there and is forcing the USPS to move it, and their top consideration is on the, on the east side of the high, or the, excuse me, the west side of the highway, right across from the lodge.
Oh, no.
Which is gonna make all of us run a gauntlet of people driving, um, hopefully 45 and not 60. But since they're gonna change the canyon, which, um, really widens that, and I think it gives people the impression that they can go faster. So, I'm just really, really concerned that our community, which is mostly elderly people, are gonna be crossing this highway, and people just don't slow down. And I'd like to, I know when I come into Cascade, I, that sign makes me think about how fast I'm going. If I'm, my mind's on, oh, my gosh, I'm getting to the commissioners meeting or whatever, I see that sign, and it does help me to remember to slow down. So, I'm hopeful that that would do the same thing, and I, I don't think we're ever gonna get such a generous offer again.
6,000 from the state, so it's, it's pretty generous, and they're tough. I don't, I'd have to get with ITD to figure out what their installations methods are for...
So, Jeff, is there gonna be one to head to the canyon, too?
No, this is just for the HOA.
This is from one side?
No, it goes through two of them. It's both ends.
It'll be one as soon as you went, go past Howard's Plunge.
Okay.
Right through where the Sasquatches are.
Yep.
It'll be one there and then one over between the Snow Park and Smiths Ferry Drive right there. Legally, they, they would go right behind, so you'd see the 45 sign, one's already there, and then just past it will be this one, hey, you didn't see that one, you better slow down.
Laughing. Only we would know where the Sasquatches hung out.
Big one.
They're gonna bring more visitors here just to see the Sasquatch, Jeff.
I was gonna say, I think it's a great idea. I think these things do work, and, you know, honestly, I'd like to see them in Lake Fork and other places as well because it's not just you guys.
Yeah, oh, I know.
So, but no, I mean, a good deal in getting the money together.
And it'd be really great, Jeff, if you guys, since you're gonna be responsible for putting them in, it'd be awesome to have them in before the rafting season, if it's possible.
And I'm just, even moving forward, I mean, if they do fail, I think it's a great idea for the community to have them, you know? I think that's something we should take on. Um, I'm a little sensitive to the scenic byway. And the fact that we've got these flashing things going off, I mean, that, that does concern me a bit, but I think it's more important that we look at the safety of the residents.
And I think Smiths Ferry's, we'd have to look a little closer because some of those ones they put in down on both sides of banks last year, they get so much traffic and not enough light in the wintertime, battery goes dead. That's why they don't work out.
Well, and there was one, I'm trying to remember, I came home Sunday, there's one somewhere in the canyon that the solar panel got blasted off and is hanging down.
Right from the snow.
Got hit with a snowplow, snow or something, and somebody needs to fix that one, but...
We set them back far enough to be able to capture the attention and still not hit them with the snowplow.
It's all legal. It's gotta be like 12 feet off the edge of the pavement and it's height there. We all, we install our signs by the book, so.
I'll make the motion that we approve the speed feedback signs at Smiths Ferry.
I'll second that.
In the agreement.
It's agreement project number A020. Okay, we got a motion in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Not that bad, was it?
Jeff, did you print that agreement off?
We're usually pretty nice. We can get...
I have a copy over here.
I have a lot of faith in you guys.
Oh.
Have I just convinced the post office not to put the mail?
That sounds horrible.
Yeah, what are the options?
What's your guys' HOA name? Is it just Smiths?
It's Smiths Ferry subdivision.
Smiths Ferry sub, because they're asking for it here.
Can't they put it down, Smiths Ferry, you know, drive there and beside the building or something? Yeah, that's crazy.
The postmistress doesn't want the delivery people to go south.
Right on there, there's gotta be filling in. That's why I was asking about the name.
Let's have them, if you can reach out to them and have them...
They're already plowing that. And it would be easy, you know?
Or do you have somebody down in your office that could do it?
We're, we're even considering just buying boxes and putting them in Smiths Ferry if they'll deliver.
Because they're asking for that.
You are, yeah, come across the single lane bridge to deliver, but I don't know.
Provide administrative installation cost, all work to be completed by Valley County.
Oh, he doesn't.
On that one. Yeah, anything that's in red.
It brings people in, but, you know.
Okay, let me get it back to us today, and we can sign it.
Happy New Year's.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Thanks, Jeff.
Um, as soon as she, if it's tomorrow or next day, just let me know how you can drive it.
ITD's gotta make the corrections, Mr. Chairman.
They can?
This is their document.
This is their document.
How, do you want us just to send a check? How do you want to get the HOAs done?
If you can, uh, just make a check to Valley County, and then we'll receipt, that's correct, the clerk's office, and then we'll receipt that money into the road department.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, guys. Drive safe.
Jeff, I wonder if IT doesn't have a program to change this document. I mean, it's a PDF, but I bet they have a PDF converter.
Yeah, because it needs the dates and all kinds of stuff on it, but...
Yeah, we'll, we'll get it to you ASAP.
And if, if tomorrow, next day, just give me a call and I can come in and sign it.
Okay.
Hey, what do you want to do next?
Um, Larry's sitting here waiting for me to bring up no-business road. Start, starting again. I don't even know where to go with it. So, so basically, Mr. Jakes, instead of having two, two documents, so he does a road agreement with us, and then he does an MOU. He was wondering if we could get it under one agreement. Because the bypass is built now, so...
I mean, it makes sense, but what, what, how does this impact people up the
Well, it's...
Business? How does this impact other people around him?
So, a lot of it is the, that bypass that they built. It's not ready, according to Larry, to put the snowmobilers on it yet. And Jay had started plowing whole width of that road.
No, it's not the whole width, just the side.
Ten or 12 feet of it, but there's no signs up there yet. There's, I, I asked Larry about it. He's, Jay told me the bypass is groomed, is ready to use. I got ahold of Larry, Larry's all know. It's, we're trying to push snow to certain areas to get it ready to grow.
And I think it's important for people to understand that even if we have the bypass, doesn't mean that we're gonna stop allowing snowmobilers on no-business.
And he understands that.
I mean, that was never intended from the beginning.
Right, right.
So, I talked to him a little bit more this morning about it, and, um, basically, we don't need, on this MOU, so this MOU is what our attorney came up with for us to use, and Plan B can go away because we've got the bypass done. We don't need Plan B anymore. Um, the only part that he has disagreement with is the amount of snow left, and we put 18 inches or six inches of hard pack, and that's basically, the six inches of hard pack is what the Forest Service says they use on their roads, but they never enforce it. Um, he would like me just to change the, um, the 18 inches is what IDPR tells us we have to have before we grow. Um, on his side, he wants us to change it to six, excuse me, to two inches. I'm thinking three inches, and that's fine, and we can change it, get it signed, and moving forward. The reason that it's taken so long to get it ready, first of all, there isn't any moisture in that early snow. And right at the top, there's still some dirt work that needs to be made, so we're, it's off-canner. Be done, it's off-canner, and so we push a lot of snow to flatten that out. And like I told Jay, it's not, we don't, we don't build trails for the experts. We build the trails for the least experienced, and as soon as that's flat, and I think I've got a guy going up today to the saddle, and he's gonna push snow downhill probably for six, seven hours until we've got enough to flatten that out, because they do have a fun run on the... run on the first. So we'll get it open, we'll get it signed tomorrow, but I think we've got a pretty good idea. I'll get rid of B off of here, um, change it to three inches on the hard pack and get him to get it signed.
So Larry, the, the MOU we have now that was on twentieth of December is updated? Because I don't have Plan B.
I think you're talking about the, are you talking about the road?
So there's two, there's two different things.
And memo ending of understanding.
Which I don't, I don't have anything to do with that road agreement.
Yeah, the under, we've got the memo of understanding.
I have the MOU and I changed the dates on it. Now I need to change, uh, now I need to change those two items. Get rid of Plan B and change the height on what he has to leave on the road.
So all of my other road agreements that I do with people, it's two inch snow floor.
I can go to two inch if that's what you guys want. I'm fine with it.
That's what's on all my other agreements with private individuals at Plow County Roads. It's a two inch snow floor.
And we've just followed the forest surface as six inches, is what we did.
I heard they're gonna start being stickers on that.
Yeah, they're starting to enforce. It's about time.
So no business is a county road or Forest Service road?
Yes.
Forest Service road that we made.
So it shouldn't match everything else that we do. I mean, the concern I always have legally is if you single out one person to make change, there has to be a darn good reason to do that.
Make it two, Larry. Make it two.
Uh, yeah, I'm, I'm fine with it. So, just so we all understand, the reason for leaving that surface is because when we have the thaw on the spring or we have early thaws, um, the roads fall apart and they really tear them back. This is a, a road maintenance issue to leave that space. Two inches is fine by me. Um, I'm happy with the way the, the, uh, bypass is starting to look by next year. We've got more volunteers coming in with more equipment, move a little bit more dirt, so it won't take as long next year. Or it's been quite a plan, quite a project. Pretty proud of everybody.
So I'm, I'm just a little confused, cause we have two different agreements still and the one that we have, uh, we got prior to the meeting was, it does not have Plan A, Plan B on it. It looks like it's already been modified and then the one you just handed us gave us, right now is an MOU that looks like it's outdated, but it also has a road maintenance agreement on it. I think we already signed the road maintenance agreement this year.
It's, they've been combined in short, the one we have.
I think this may have come from Mr. Jakes, so...
Oh, this one did?
Let me see. The MOU, the MOU we, he signed last year and the year before and the reason for the MOU is because of all the, all the costs that he had to absorb at the club and the snowmobiler shouldn't absorb and so those were all put on this agreement. This was to keep us all on the, for winter maintenance only. It's not for year round.
So I'm gonna get this straight in my head here. The one that's on the computer is not this one. You want us to sign this one?
I want this one, yes.
Not the one you just handed us?
The one I just handed you is the one I want to sign.
Not the one that's on our computer.
Yeah. The difference is, all I've changed on this is the, uh, twenty-one, twenty-two. I changed the dates on it.
But we don't need Plan B anymore.
No, and I'll take Plan B off.
We're not signing this. That's what I'm saying.
No, absolutely not. I'll take Plan B off. I'll take, take the six inches down to two inches and then I'll have Jay sign it and take it in and get it notarized and bring it back to you guys.
So who gave us the one that's in our packet, Larry?
That would have come from this gentleman here.
Probably the one that I was...
The dates on it are for twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-one. So that one is no good.
I've got one in twenty-one, twenty-two.
It says at the top and in the bottom, dates are old. Get down to the, um...
I'll, I'll scan it after I make the changes and send it to you.
So what I would like to do is hold off on the vote on this until we see what you come up with and then we'll look at that and do it later on today. Will that work?
It'll work great.
Okay.
You okay, Jeff?
Yep.
Okay, so that one's postponed. Hey, the next, you got two more decisions on expending money to purchase parts and wreck vehicles.
Hey, so we talked about getting Parks and Rec a new half ton for Larry to drive since his is two hundred and thirty thousand miles or something, starting to have issues. Cascade Auto just found one pickup that matches what we want within about a thousand mile radius.
I thought we did this last week.
What's that?
I thought we did this last week.
We talked about it, but we never finally...
We talked about it, but what I'm, there's no money budgeted and this pickup that Kathy found was... She'll take an additional about fourteen hundred dollars off, so it's forty-six thousand seventeen dollars.
Forty-six what?
Forty-six zero one seven.
Zero one seven.
Forty-six thousand seventeen.
And it's a half ton four wheel drive?
Yes, it's a twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one fifteen hundred tradesman, crew cab, four by four. And I've done my search and I've, that's, that's the best price I can find anywhere Washington, Oregon.
So where are we gonna take this out? Remember?
And is part of this a grant, Larry?
It was gonna be, it was gonna be, but he hasn't had time to turn a grant in it.
Okay. So the full forty-six thousand then has to come out of Pilt or General Fund?
Correct. The grant that we got was for the truck that just got outfitted with the utility bed.
That was half grant.
Okay. So why wasn't this in the budget?
Cause his pickup started having issues after the budget was already done. And we don't have another pickup that's not kinda like one we already got.
Larry, go ahead.
Just a thought, if we do do this, that's a, that's, it wouldn't be under, there wouldn't be a grant attached to it. Every year we can apply for a grant, so I can use it until we get one on a grant and then this could go back into the road department if you need one.
Well, hopefully you're gonna have another employee and you're gonna need another vehicle, so...
I'm just doing what I can do on it, you know? I was a little surprised about it.
No, we're asking him to drive around the truck that's pretty well wore out. In the wintertime, it's, we need to do this, I think.
I agree a hundred percent. You can't put an employee in a vehicle that doesn't work, so...
I'm gonna make the motion then. We authorize the purchase of this vehicle for Parks and Rec, forty-six thousand seventeen dollars and to be funded out of Pilts.
Second that.
The only question I have on that is, does this have to go out for proposals since...
No, it's under fifty.
Under fifty.
Okay, great.
So I got a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.
You said that's a half ton, right?
So this pickup, I haven't talked to Kathy today, might be gone.
Well, make a call. What, what are you waiting for? You're texting right now.
She, I think she had him, I, I told him I was coming in to talk to you today, so she might have, this pickup's on a lot in Utah.
Okay.
So we'll probably have it here within a couple, three weeks, so she can get her transport to get it up here or she'll go down and pick it up with their pickup and trailer.
Perfect.
Okay.
Wait, let me order a vehicle from her and then she can...
So you wanna go back and do blue lines now?
Yeah, let's get blue line done and that's, that's good enough for today.
If I remember right, all of us have to sign these?
No, it's just one person, but we kinda spread them out, so each one of you, each one of you gets a couple. And nothing really checked.
Improvement first? We need a motion to approve them, right? Sure. How many, is there a change in mileage? Are we all...
Well, the mileage changed like half a mile. I caught a little road out there that we don't do.
Okay.
Most of the, almost all the changes went from cold mixed asphalt to hot mixed asphalt. That's all, all it was.
Would entertain a motion to approve the blue line map slash present.
Oh, wait.
I'll make the motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
If you sign, sign those two.
Ever see us changing, Jeff? How do you know?
Unless we build something new. I mean, a lot of these roads that we don't maintain are goat trails and they just happen to get one that's got most of the changes on it.
Yeah, as I say, I've got the lucky one, I guess.
So Jeff, you want, you want a signature here?
Yes. So G two is hot mix. So green, that's, that was shown as G one.
Mm-hmm.
That's West Lake Fork that used to be cold mix, so we went from G one to G two.
So our box is thirteen fifty?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's, that's the one with most of the changes. That whole trade highway that's in cold mix, hot mix, East Lake Fork, we did, yeah, there's the whole East Lake Fork still, it's cold mix, which I probably changed last year, but they didn't catch it, but... So the distance in mileage went from seven hundred and thirty-five point six four seven to seven thirty-three point eight nine seven. So two, not even two miles difference.
Changes that per mileage benefit we get from gas tanks?
Yeah.
Is there ever gonna be a plan to...
It's gonna have to be.
Inside drive, it's gonna have to be.
Yep. High Valley, I don't think anything changed on that one. I'm sure there's something running Valley, but...
You're a paper person, but it would be easier for us to review this if it was electronic and we could get it before.
You don't have to revert, review it if you trust me.
I trust you, but trust and verify is my motto, Jeff. You're asking me to sign things that I have no idea.
If I could scan them in, I'd be able to. Yeah, hopefully next year...
So when your employees say that, just trust me. You always trust everything.
You should. I don't lie. Yeah, next year it's gonna be all electronic.
Bear Valley. Maps, I get stuck back.
Yeah, you don't really realize how much we do in the back country. They flock these back country maps.
That's right.
Holy cow, do we have a large valley. Oh my gosh.
Most people don't realize it, but we're, we're on the west side of the Valley County and it goes that way. Nineteen miles to Stanley.
She's, she's, how many miles of, uh, Bear Valley road are there from? You said about nineteen?
No, it's nineteen miles from where we stopped maintenance to Stanley.
Yeah.
If the road's in good shape, we can save forty-five minutes by driving through Bear Valley to get to Stanley and drive the tanks and across.
I was gonna call you earlier this year when we went. I thought, no, he's been...
You don't own a trailer.
We've done it once when it was in good shape and I knew you were up there, but I should call Jeff and ask.
Find out when they're graded and then drive them.
That's the best thing to do. That's it.
Okay, enjoy the plowing. It's every day, right?
You're not plowing, right?
I'm plowing.
You are?
We're down two people. Oh, you weren't in here.
Then you were down one.
He's plowing my road. He plows the chairman's road.
I got one guy on administrative leave and another guy quit on Christmas. Yeah, I got a guy on administrative leave. He's been out for about a week and a half. Yeah, haven't heard back on that yet, so... Yep, so I'm plowing, Andy's plowing. It's kind of one big happy game again.
Well, I'll stop shooting it as you're going by now that I know that it's you.
I go by and you don't, and there's not even a light on at your house.
You guys are way early for me.
Supposed to be leaving them like carrot cake or something.
You know?
No, I don't know, Jeff.
Oh, I, you just got just a minute here. Um, I sent Doug an email. He didn't answer me yet, but I'm trying to get on this federal surplus property eligibility application. I don't know if you've had time to look at it yet or not, Doug, but...
I have not. I just, yeah, I was out Thursday and Friday, so...
Do, do we wanna do it for the whole county? So facilities can access it, anybody else could access it, or do you want it just for the road department? If you want it just for the road department, it's gonna, it's gonna take a little bit more work to get my, well, it's just my budget to be on here instead of the whole county's.
I guess my suggestion is just do it for the road department, cause you can find deals on there from graders or front end loaders or who knows what.
Well, main, main thing is water trucks.
Water trucks?
Cause we can get a thirty-year-old water truck that's only got seven thousand miles on it.
So if there was buildings and grounds, Jeff could just apply for it for them.
But you have to have the county budget, I think.
Yeah, so Sherry was part of this conversation with Paul Hefner. We don't pay for these. These are free. If all we have to do is prove maintenance on it, then it's ours. And when we're done with it, we give it back to these people and they give it to somebody else.
Well, is there like a list of stuff that's available? Is there a website?
But I, I've gotta get all this filled out before I can get access to even see what's on there.
I'm just thinking, there was a lot of things that Paula talked about. I think buildings and grounds should be on there, too.
So then buildings and grounds should fill out their own app, I would assume.
Oh, we could do it for the whole county and...
Well, you have one.
Wh- whichever, I mean it...
So you're gonna need Doug's help with the budget and all that stuff?
I'll have to sit down with Doug and get, get some numbers from him and, and he'll take your, one of your, got, one of your signatures on here somewhere.
I just don't think it's gonna be that much more work to do it for, you know, at least buildings and grounds also.
Well, you only probably do it once and you're in for life, right?
Yeah, so, so it's got a whole, it's got, one, two...
Oh, wait, park and rec?
It's got three sections on there for people that are, um, okay to use it.
Park and rec.
Park and rec would be another one, cause maybe every once in a while they might come up with a group.
So we probably just need to do the county as a whole.
I would.
And put Scott Klingon on there, me and Larry.
That I would do, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, that's, other than that, we're just plowing and we've had some... deaths within road department in-laws and outlaws and everything else, so we've, we've been kinda just hanging in there with...
What you got?
With what we got.
So we were talked to this morning. Scott had some vehicles in the parking lot. We asked him to reach out to you and figure out where would be best to park those so that they can still maintain it.
Same place last year and the year before and the year before.
Well, Parks and Rec's vehicle was in the wrong spot this morning.
I already chewed on Larry a while ago.
Okay, so Kerry Palmer just reached out from White Cap and they wanna know if it's okay if they park their vehicles in our parking lot. Um, and I, I just feel like we shouldn't have, they are from White Cap and I just feel like we should, we've got enough with snow removal that we shouldn't be.
I agree.
Yeah, I mean, we've got, I just told, I got two, two new guys running loaders this year and they didn't get the signs moved that says long-term parking, no parking here. So we ended up with that red pickup parked right there where we pushed the snow.
You guys do, or do you know if Scott does, the senior center?
We do.
So you really don't want cars parked there either then?
Nope.
There's not a lot of places to go with that snow, but north.
Yeah, and I, I don't know where, where White Cap could park. I, I really don't.
Who plows out White Cap?
We used to. I guess we're still doing it. I don't know. The city kinda sneaks in on the front and goes right to the curb and they're plowing the city streets and they pull everything to the center and haul it off.
Hmm.
We've usually just plowed this little back corner where one or two vehicles, where Beth used to park there and I think that's where their little Explorer used to park.
Okay, we gotta move on.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Have a good day. But this time I would entertain a motion to go into executive session for indigent and charity. This is a two oh six one D.
That we go into executive session for add-on code seventy-four two oh six one D.
Second.
You can second it by roll call?
Aye, ma'am.
Op and aye?